Good evening and welcome to the March 26, 2018 Joint Work Session of the Mayor, Council, and Planning Commission. Tonight, we have one topic of conversation, and that is to receive a presentation on proposed street typologies for our road code update. And for those of you who are watching and don't understand that, you'll quickly understand what we're talking about here. Rob, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council and members of the commission. As the mayor mentioned, this is our first stab in presentation to you of street design standards. In the FY 18 Annual Strategic Plan, one of the directions and action items in both transportation and planning was to update Chapter 19 of the road code. In June of 2017, the city contracted with Tool Design Group to assist in this effort, and work began in August of 2017. The goal is to develop street design standards that will be the criteria for future road designs associated with new development and act as a guide of all the pre-1980 roads built to current code and those roads built under road code waivers. We've taken a different approach with this, and the typologies consider the needs of all users of the roadway and the adjoining land use context within the city, including design elements reflecting both Vision Zero and Complete Streets principles. On this slide, sort of working with Tool, this was the overall guiding principle in bold is the main part, "Design all capital road improvements and streetscape enhancements and all new development to improve multimodal travel for pedestrian cyclist transit and other alternatives, as well as the automobile." And this is really in keeping with an adopted theme that we've done both through the strategic plan and the existing 2009 transportation element. I think it's very important, as we begin this presentation, to everybody understand what the purpose of this is and what it does not do. The new road code would not void existing plan approvals or road designs. It does not require the retrofit of existing roads. It would establish elements to be pursued to the greatest extent possible in retrofitting roads, but acknowledges that existing rights of way may preclude the ultimate thing. In short, we're not taking buildings to match a diagram. The new road code would apply to new roads proposed as part of future development plans. The new road code includes typologies of roads not currently found within the city, so you will see things this evening like frontage roads and service roads, which currently we do not have. The roads may exhibit different typologies over their entire length as adjoining land use contexts change. What I mean by this, for example, if you think about Russell Avenue. Russell Avenue up near Lake Forest Mall and Lake Forest Boulevard is very different than the Russell Avenue that goes through the Bucks Walker Russell District. It changes the adjoining land use, and therefore, the road over its entire length would change its typology. The new road code would apply to both public and privately owned roads, and the new road code would include waiver provisions. In short, our goal is to create and transform roadways and not just make them as a vehicle to move automobiles, but to really develop a sense of place and reflect what we have done and what we wish to do going forward. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Jeremy Scherzen from Tool Design, project manager, who's been assisting us on this endeavor.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is a project that we really enjoyed working on and sort of leveraged the work that we've done in other communities and cities around the country. Prince George's County is the one that we've most recently tackled, but have also worked in Boston, Dallas, and a lot of other places. We really enjoyed working with the city staff as well. They brought a lot of helpful information, not just the plans that they provided that we reviewed to make sure that the recommendations we were providing sort of aligned with things we saw the city already doing, but also just a lot of working knowledge about how things work in the city and the approval process. So that as we were developing this, we were doing it through, looking through the right lens. One thing that we did upfront was tour the city and really look at the existing street types that you have, understand the context, and just look at the characteristics of the streets so that we could see what would really fit within the community itself. We also had four working sessions with staff. Those included street types, lane width, and design speeds, fire code and corner radius. So this was something that we had emergency services there to assist us with, and finally, bicycle facilities and pedestrian facilities. We talked a lot about speed and the speed of roadways and how that relates to safety. Looking at research, we find that speeds that are too fast are more dangerous, not just for the motorists, but also to the more vulnerable users, pedestrians and bicyclists. So looking around, we found a lot of characteristics that will be represented in the street types that you'll see. So example would be Ellington. You can look on either side of that. It's a really, represents a mixed-use boulevard type character. Fairbanks, more residential. Crown Alley, sort of working as access to the backs of the buildings, those sorts of things. But what we also noticed was, a lot of your streets have medians, and we find this to be a really great characteristic of a street that works. Medians are great for stormwater management, creating separations. There's just a lot of safety benefits associated with them. So we tried to work that into the street types as we were developing them. As I go through these graphics, you're going to see the image of the tree appear in the medians, but I wanted to say upfront that just because it shows a tree does not mean that's what needs to be there or is intended to be there. It's just there to represent that it's a median space. It could be planted with low vegetation. It could accommodate a turn lane. It could have nothing on it, but just representing that, showing that it's representing a specific space. After working with the staff, we ultimately developed nine street types that are represented here, and we'll go through those in greater detail. But it really hit on all of the elements that the city staff had identified in that first working session of different areas or different land uses that they wanted to make sure that the update to the road code would address. So the first of those was the mixed-use boulevard that was identified. Mixed-use boulevard, if you look at your existing streets, maybe the character that represents that would be Russell Ave or Kentland Boulevard, Washington Boulevard, something like that. And the ultimate goal of the mixed-use boulevard is to travel between medium and high-density mixed-use areas. It's sort of where there's a lot of pedestrian activity, a lot of bicycle activity, exchange of commerce, that sort of thing. It's also often transit-oriented, and you have a lot of people riding transit to get to it. So that's what we focused on, recommending slower speeds, access to transit. So this is a cross-section representing, I think we have three mixed-use boulevards. This is mixed-use boulevard cross-section A. So you can see it's a travel lane in each direction, parallel parking on either side, a landscape buffer suitable for tree plantings, other vegetation, lighting, that sort of thing, separated bike lanes, which keep bicyclists separate from pedestrian traffic and motor vehicles, and the pedestrian realm. And so those are elements that you're going to see consistent across all the different cross-sections, just organized in different fashion and with different dimensions. Mixed-use boulevard B, that's a travel lane in each direction and also provides accommodation for a center turn lane. All the rest of the features are the same. And finally, mixed-use boulevard C, this is where you have a little bit more vehicular traffic, so as much as two vehicular travel lanes in each direction, as well as that center median area, which could accommodate turn lanes, things of that nature. The Park Boulevard is probably represented by First Field Road, West Watkins Mill, something like that. And it's sort of links between commercial areas and other areas. It could have office parks or larger format commercial, but a variety of those sorts of land uses along it. It's also a link in your transportation network that might involve longer pedestrian or longer bicycle trips, so we don't necessarily expect quite as much pedestrian and bike activity, but needs to accommodate those users. So here's a representation of Park Boulevard A. It's a travel lane in each direction, a generous landscape and furniture buffer, and this one is showing a shared use path, because as I mentioned, not necessarily as much bicycle traffic that would warrant separating them from pedestrians. Park Boulevard B, that's also a travel lane in each direction, but adds that median space and opportunity to increase the tree canopy of a park-style boulevard, also showing separated bike lanes in that particular configuration. And then Park Boulevard C, that's two travel lanes in each direction, the center median and a shared use path with its respective buffers. And finally, Park Boulevard D, that's showing two travel lanes in each direction, the median, the landscape buffer, and the separated bike lane. And when I hit the button "next," it's going to morph into showing how this also accommodates traffic or transit. So you'll notice that the right-of-way width does not change. All of these cross-sections will accommodate transit just by moving some of the spaces around, so that's all sort of baked into the way we develop the recommendations of dimensions for the guide, that all of these would accommodate transit. Main Street, this is sort of your center of the community, a lot of exchange of commerce, but usually, these are lower buildings, two- and three-story buildings. Oftentimes, you are dealing with a really slow-speed environment. You don't necessarily need to have bike lanes in this sort of environment because of the slower speed of traffic. So our recommendation for the Main Street is a travel lane in each direction, on-street parking, and that on-street parking may be parallel parking or angled parking. Again, that's also included in the recommendations for the road code, and then a generous sidewalk realm, eight feet wide for that, as well as the landscape buffer. Neighborhood residential, this is sort of your typical understanding of residential streets. It's where people live, whether that's single-family house or multi-family dwellings. Prioritizing the slower speed of vehicles is a high priority on these types of streets. You often have children playing in the street, that sort of thing on these streets. And also bicyclists are typically able to share the road on this characteristic, this characterized road type. So residential cross-section showing a travel lane in each direction, the on-street parking, as well as the sidewalk and the landscape buffer. A shared street, this is one of the streets that Rob had alluded to, that you don't necessarily have, that exists in the city today, but these are really great streets for farmers' markets, festivals, sort of an open playground of things that could happen in the street environment. They're usually curbless and sort of a seamless transition between the pedestrian and the vehicular realm, and it's sort of a space where everybody travels slowly. Pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor vehicles can kind of share the same space. And it's also the kind of street that can be closed to sort of create that festival environment or other uses. So a minimum 20 feet of space so that cars can still get past one another, but generally focusing on improvements for pedestrians and bicyclists. The alley street type, this could really be in any sort of area of the city, but focusing on providing sort of back-of-house access. It could also serve as the area where trash receptacles, those sorts of things are stored. So really, the only requirement for it is that it's of sufficient width to accommodate the vehicles passing one another. These will often be designed to accommodate whatever the adjacent land use needs are in terms of those adjacent receptacles and that sort of thing. Frontage Road, another one that you don't necessarily have today, but this is a road that travels along your, it runs parallel to your heavily-traveled vehicular roads that are a little higher speed, whereas the frontage road is going to be a little slower speed, sort of orienting those speeds more towards the pedestrian and the bicyclist, and providing access to those adjacent land uses. So two examples of the frontage road, A and B. One would be if you were providing it in a one-way scenario, one travel lane with a parking lane. The other version would be if you wanted to create it in a two-way scenario, so two-way vehicular traffic with on-street parking on the side that has the buildings, furthest from that heavily-oriented street, which is shown here, all the way to the right as major road. Commercial service road, this is sort of one of those roads that links any of those previous street types that I mentioned into a commercial area. So it's providing that direct access to the commercial parcels themselves. Again, slower speeds, allowing pedestrians to easily cross at the intersections, but not necessarily focusing on pedestrians. It's really about linking people from those roads into the commercial areas. So a travel lane in each direction with the sidewalk. Commercial thoroughfares, and this was one that we added, I think, in the second work session, because we thought it was important to provide guidance on those roads that really are, their purpose is to move cars through the city in large volumes and speed. So mixed uses along these types of roads, often multiple lanes and a little bit higher speed, 35 recommended here. So there were two configurations that we showed, one with two travel lanes, one with three. Both of these have shared use paths to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists. It'll also function to provide bus stops, those sorts of things, but ultimately, it's enough lanes to move the traffic that you need to move for that particular road. So we've provided a chart that really summarizes each of those street types, providing recommended design speeds, minimum rights of way, and other basic guidance about the different characteristics of each of those streets. Along with the road code revisions, we also provided some guidance on how to design streets at those slower speeds. This was something staff was really interested in doing. If you're going to say, "Design a street for 20 miles an hour," it can't necessarily be perfectly straight and flat. You have to make changes to it. So we provided a document that provides recommendations on how and when to implement horizontal deflection, or really changing the alignment of a road so that you can encourage drivers to drive at the speed that you say that they should drive at. And so along with that, we provided a matrix, and you probably can't read it because it's a lot of content on there, but basically, it just assigns each of those treatments to each of the street types and identifies whether it should be considered, may be considered, or is not appropriate for that street type.
So that is what we're proposing, what the next steps are. Essentially, this evening, staff is seeking guidance on three main topics, whether to support the course of amending the road code, the proposed typologies. If you support the typologies, we're wanting to know, you know, how you feel these should be amended, if at all. And then essentially, at the end, you know, to seek direction to continue with the process to amend the road code. If all of those go, hopefully, fingers crossed, in a positive way, we'll amend the typologies about what comes out of this evening. At that point, we will take the amended typologies and actually present them to our development community for their review and comment also, including engineering firms who are interested because these developers will have to be implementing this, so we want their input. And then following that, and any particular revisions from there, we begin the formal ordinance amendment process. And that basically encompasses amending Chapter 19, which is Streets and Sidewalks, the appropriate section, and then taking a lot of the information, you know, discussed this evening, the typologies, the matrices, the best practices, all of that, and working that into a regulation that will be referenced through the ordinance. And then that would be the guiding document, you know, in our development process going forward. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great. First off, thank you all for the presentation, and Jeremy, thanks for your work and your firm's work in generating this. I, it should be known, am not a traffic engineer, so I just want to just want to disclaim that right now. So I wouldn't begin to tell you whether a 20-foot road width or whether a certain turn radius is the right, the right thing. I'm going to trust you guys on that. But what it seems to me you're doing with these recommendations makes a lot of sense. We are trying to make our roads and sort of place-make, help our roads, help us tell the story of Gaithersburg in these interesting ways and accommodate all these different modes of travel, and it seems like that's what we're getting at here, so it makes a lot of sense to me. With that, I'll open it up to whoever wants to comment on this or ask questions. Mike?
Okay. At the very beginning, you talked about the green infrastructure being a secondary focus, and I guess I would ask, why can't it be an integrated focus in road code structure? Why isn't green infrastructure integrated into these designs rather than the secondary?
It can be accommodated, and I think that's what Jeremy was sort of going at earlier about while we're showing the medians for tonight's presentation with trees. Oftentimes, like we see in Crown, the median actually serves as the ESD facility. So I didn't mean to minimize that. Again, the main design stuff is based upon the adjoining, you know, land use context and the multimodal, but we wanted to design these in such a way that could facilitate green infrastructure either in the medians or when you notice the six-foot planting strips on the side. So it's not to minimize that.
Okay.
You know, it was just for purposes of tonight's presentation.
You know, that's what it said. It said secondary, a secondary focus, and that's why I asked that question. So I'm glad to hear you say that. That's pretty important, and I think we have to look at green infrastructure wherever we can put it, including where we build the road. So, and I think the other issue is that we do have a lot of residential streets in a number of neighborhoods where there is no sidewalk at all, because there's no room for it, or it was never designed as those developments, as those communities developed. So in a way, that's another model. I guess the model is the shared roadway, where we have people, since there's no sidewalk, they walk in the street, they bike, you know, they bike in the street, et cetera. So you have to be aware of that. And then finally, a question about, I like to see, I'm glad to see the slow-speed designs. I guess that's another word for traffic calming, or encompasses traffic calming as well. I think there are a lot of opportunities where we could use those, especially in our residential neighborhoods where we do have complaints about speeding, and especially in a neighborhood where there are limited number of sidewalks or pracks, no sidewalks at all. So I happen to live in one of those neighborhoods and heard a lot about, from residents, about those issues. So I'm glad to see that. I think the other, the other aspect of how we work on slow-speed designs is not just by how we build the road, but what kind of, I guess, basically, what kind of markings we put on the road to mark places where people should walk across the street, where bikes should travel, where pedestrians should walk, et cetera. So I think that should probably be, I hope that would be part of this design as well as we, as we look at different models of how to incorporate pedestrians and bikers and remind drivers of what the appropriate speed might be on that roadway, is that we include those elements as well. Other than that, it's a, it's a really nice plan. I think it gives us a way to kind of systematize everything that we're doing and reminds us about some of the limitations of certain kind of designs here, and that's, that's pretty important as we go forward.
I'd like to amplify a point you were getting at, and I think, if you imagine this as sort of a pattern book or a pattern language for how to do roads in the city, I'd like to see more emphasis on how they intersect and specifically how pedestrians navigate that, so that it's, I think it's great to show a section of the street with, I think it's, it's great to show a section of how the complete street works kind of in a transit, but not, but where they intersect is actually where the big problems are in most places, certainly here. And there's got to be a way to capture that in this sort of typology kind of framework where we talk about how to get everybody across each types of mode in a better way than we do now, or a better way than maybe would be the default in some of the conventional intersection design.
Yeah. If I can jump on top of that one as well, because I was going to go there, and the Transportation Committee has been wrestling for some time with, in particular for bicycles and to some extent for pedestrians. We typically have safe paths within certain areas, and then you cross a major thoroughfare where you take your life in your hands. And I think what we're looking for, and we have planned some studies, and I think you folks may be involved in those as we go forward in the next year, in terms of how you bridge those gaps, how you, how you go from a more residential setting to cross another, an area so that you can get to another safe path. So that's, I think, a really important piece of how this all fits together.
Danny, can I amplify? Hold on, we'll go back to you.
Yeah. I've written down things, and I really wanted to emphasize like roundabouts and intersections because there are always points of contention for us when we look at new, proposed development in the city. So if you could really put some emphasis on roundabouts and intersections, and you know, the most dangerous two seconds of anybody's life is going through an intersection. So there needs to be, you know, some, some real thorough discussion around that and how, you know, that can be improved.
Rob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just going to piggyback on what John was saying and just kind of ask the question or make the comment of, how does, well, I guess it's a question. How does our road code or the proposed, what's being proposed here, integrate with what the county and the state are doing? Because the city is intersected by county and state roads. They're mostly the faster roads where, as Neil said, you sometimes take your life in your own hands as you're, as you're moving on to them. So I just wanted to figure out, as we're thinking about this stuff, how are we also thinking about how this will integrate and this will work with what the county and the states are building as well?
Included in your packets was a memo from myself to both bodies, and that was touched upon. Part of the issue is, the county has amended their road code twice since, I believe, 2005, and will probably be amending it again as their council continues to adopt policies without understanding how they're going to implement those policies. The state has adopted a complete streets policy, but in our, in our work with the state, oftentimes, when they come in to do work as a point of discussion and potentially, you know, leverage, they will look at local plans to discuss how do you want to see the street designed. And the county's, you know, a little bit different because there. So this is why, as Jeremy mentioned, we had included the commercial thoroughfare. So that's really our arterials that we're talking about. And while we'll never get the state or necessarily the county, like in the case of Muddy Branch, to fully adopt those cross-sections, if they understand what we're trying to get at when they begin to redevelop potentially or retrofit roads, we now have something to say, "This is sort of what we're looking for." So that's really how it works. No, we can't unilaterally impose, you know, our code on roads we don't own or maintain outside of, you know, private ones with the original design, but I think it will dovetail. And I think what you're seeing with the county, I mean, we did include some county facets, such as now expanding our on-street parking spaces to eight feet as opposed to seven feet. That is something, you know, the county adopted, and Montgomery County Fire and Rescue had lobbied for, so we're taking that into account. They have, they have the whole county, so we don't have rural roads, but we tried to grab certain elements, such as for like our Main Street, it's very reflective of some of their commercial roads that they've come in with. So I think it'll work nicely, and I think, as I said, as it relates to the state, it gives us discussion points to advocate for what we'd like to see should retrofits occur.
I mean, have we, have we spoken with the county about how our, how we can integrate our roads with theirs? Are we, are we going to adopt a road code that makes sense as it intersects with county roads, so you're not going from one typology to another?
That would not occur, because again, these aren't applicable to county-owned and maintained roads. These are only applicable to our roads and future private ones. So, and again, part of the problem is, as I mentioned in the memo, part of the reason, you know, that we, you know, asked the council to, you know, direct us as an action item and move forward is, the way our code is written, we have adopted the county's road code. We don't know what it is, and it's changed twice on us, but, but, you know, technically under Chapter 19, we're beholden to it. And again, as they continue to change their code, the last I understood, based upon their work trying to adopt the Vision Zero, is they are now beginning, and I know in the Bethesda area, because I think you guys even did work, they are beginning to take this philosophy too, of looking at it not just as the movement of vehicles, but the to respond to the adjoining land use context. So actually, they're sort of following up with us.
Okay. I mean, I just want to make sure that the biker's not going to know the difference between a city road or a county road, or the person driving that car's not going to know the difference between the two. I just want to make sure that whatever we're proposing to adopt in the city is compatible with what's being already adopted, or as I guess you're saying, keeps changing in the county. For example, I was down shopping at Mom's today, down on, off Randolph Road, and recently, I think in the last year or two, they started adopting the bike lanes on the mixed-use paths, the green strips. I mean, it, some of it goes out into the road, but some of it actually goes up onto the side. I mean, it, some of it goes out into the road, but some of it actually goes up onto the sidewalks. You know, people riding their bikes on that and then they ride right to Rockville. And Rockville doesn't have the same road construction, doesn't have the same mapping of the streets, doesn't have the same painting. It'll get confusing to whoever's trying to navigate the different jurisdictions. So that's just my point is that we're, I'm hoping we're, we're looking at that as well.
If I could just add one thing, the intent of this was not to get into intersection design. Intersection design is a, is somewhat of a different animal in that there are so many variables with an intersection to address the safety of an intersection that it really has to be designed on a case-by-case basis, sort of having a general template for an intersection. There are guidelines and documents that are used to design intersections. And it's often more of an engineering effort that is specific to the particulars of the intersection. So the road code would not really be the place in which you would sort of attempt to put, to spell out what an intersection, any specific intersection would look like because it varies so much.
Okay.
But I think following up on that, though, what we have looked at, and it's following on some of the work being done at the county, is now that we're proposing new roads with new bike ped facilities, how those bike ped facilities can integrate through an intersection. So to Michael's point, you know, we can't say every intersection must look like this because it's all unique. But we can say that if you have, you know, best practices for a separated bike lane going through, what are some of the things to look at for intersection design? Or if you have an on-street bike lane and you're going through an intersection, and how would that potentially integrate with a transit stop, you know, things like that? We have had those discussions. And I believe in another item in your packet with the speed, you know, the speed tools, there is some beginning discussion of that. And that was one of the comments made and transmitted to you by the Transportation Committee is they sort of like some of the things because we are bringing in some new concepts that we don't currently have in the city.
But here's the thing. So in the, the actual presentation of the, some of the traffic, what did you call the traffic calming? The speed controls, whatever those things were?
Slow speed street.
Slow speed, okay.
But yeah, it's traffic.
So in some of the examples, you actually were using crosswalk design as a way to mitigate that. So I think the point is that's from looking through a windshield. So now what does that really look like to a pedestrian to make them feel and in fact be safe when they use it? I think that's, that's where we shift the emphasis at the intersection. It may not actually talk about the specific geometry or the specific engineering of an intersection. But I think what we're talking about is flipping the perspective from through a windshield to, you know, at eye height when you're walking as a pedestrian. And you approach some of those features that you're already showing as a speed control device, but really ought to be something more about safe crossing devices or safe crossing environments.
Lloyd?
Yeah, I don't want to get into specifics, specific intersections. I agree with you, it's a separate case-by-case basis, but I do have some concerns. One concern is we have daylight eight to nine hours. I don't see anything in this report that talks about evening. There are pedestrians that cross crosswalks in the evening. There are pedestrians out there all hours. What is it that you have recommended? Or is there anything that in the topology that can be integrated into this report or into future regulations regarding lighting, regarding vision and related issues like that? Is there anything in the report that addresses that yet at this point?
So we showed lighting in the landscape buffers. It's pedestrian scale lighting to better illuminate the pedestrians. We don't specifically address lighting. And again, this sort of relates back to the intersection issues. But there are federal guidelines and design recommendations about how to best illuminate pedestrians so that they're visible at those locations. This does not specifically address that.
And are those guidelines usually considered to be de minimis? I mean, the minimum guidelines or are they considered to be average? I mean, because we have specific problems in the, in the city here with lighting. And yes, they meet the standard, but obviously they don't, they're not effective in certain intersections. And that's my concern. My other concern is when we talk about crosswalks and calming, traffic calming, is there any, are there any provisions for innovations? There are lots of new innovations out there besides speed humps and painting the lines on the crosswalk. For instance, with bright white paint. There's LED lighting, there is solar panels. All of that comes up, and I've seen it in many, many different cities, many different neighborhoods around, around the country. I don't see any provisions for that here as well. Is that something that's just done on a case-by-case basis? Or is that something that you can expound upon or expand upon in this report?
So to some degree, it depends on what the treatment is. If it's actually a traffic control device, that has to go through a federal process. So you have to submit to F H W A, the Highway Authority, a request to experiment with that treatment if it's actually a traffic control device. If it changes in geometry and those sorts of things, there are certainly opportunities to experiment with those. We were simply trying to provide a palette of different treatments that could be considered to meet the goals.
So those, those treatments that you suggest, those don't get put into, into chapter 19? They're just suggestions?
They will be put into the regulation because these are the typical engineering tools used. But as I sort of mentioned in the beginning, the regulation is such, one, it doesn't preclude innovation and obviously anything could be looked at. And two, if it's something that becomes standard, the advantage of doing it as a regulation as opposed to putting it, codifying it into ordinance is it's an easier process to amend the regulation. Our goal, again, like with everything, we want to make this living and moving forward sort of as we did with the stormwater management and other such initiatives and movements here in the city. But we have to start, you know, from someplace. So what you see on the screen right now, even though it's impossible to read, you know, the horizontal curves, the chicanes, the raised medians, these are typically the things that we see now and candidly in the foreseeable future as development comes in. And these are also tools that lend themselves to the retrofit, such as Councilmember Sesna was mentioning. You know, if it comes in and we begin going into some of our older neighborhoods that were built to the 1968 road code, these are elements we can then sort of judge against to use. So it doesn't preclude.
So it's organic, in other words, it does evolve, it can evolve the way it's, okay.
So it's illustrious. Neil?
Okay, so there's a lot of really interesting designs here, but a lot of them, a lot of the designs don't really look like the streets that we actually have in the city. And I know that the intent here is not to have to go back and wholesale retrofit the streets that we have. I'm just curious, though, to try to envision these in a real world setting, to imagine that if we had to, if we were going to do some, some of these over again, some specific streets that you've looked at. For example, Kentland's Boulevard is one that's been problematic in some ways. Ellington Boulevard, considering a car crashed into my car on that road a couple of years ago, has never felt very safe. Some of the other streets have their own set of issues. I'm curious how these would fit in if you were, if you were reinventing those roads. What would you pick out of these elements to address what's there? How would these actually make things better?
So one thing that we were very specific on in these recommendations is the width of lanes. Federal Highway recently allowed even D O Ts to throw out some of their older guidance and allowed them to use narrower lanes. There's no negative effects of that. We don't find that there are more crashes. But one thing we do find is that it's a, one, narrower width for pedestrians to cross, but also it's easier to control the speeds of vehicles to what you intended them to drive. So narrowing up the lane widths is one thing that can be done on pretty much any street that was built longer than 10 years ago.
Okay, so let me stop you because I'm not sure you're answering what I intended to ask. So let me clarify. I'm not asking you to reinvent, to re-engineer an existing road. But if you had to build Kentland's Boulevard from scratch today, what would you, what would it look like as opposed to what it looks like today? Or Ellington Boulevard? What would you pick out of the toolbox here?
So Ellington Boulevard, and again, in your packets, you know, the draft, what it had here, we didn't want to start assigning roads, but we wanted to give examples of roads in the city so you can understand the land use context we were looking at. Ellington very much fits into the main street. So this is very much what you potentially would see. One lane in each direction as you get closer down the eight-foot strip, the six-foot, then the eight-foot sidewalk. And the reason with these main streets, East Diamond Avenue, even Market Street over at Market Square, is it's ground floor commercial, it's pedestrian activated, the speeds are low. So the anticipation is bikes can use the road safely. This is really, you know, what we would be looking for. For there, for if you wanted to say Kentland's Boulevard.
Well, how is this different than, than Ellington Boulevard is today? Is it different or is it pretty much the same?
Well, Ellington, you know, part of it has, has a median. It has seven-foot parallel parking spaces instead of eight. I believe it has 11-foot travel lanes instead of 10. It has the straightaway. So this is where the other tools, the best practices for slowing speed. Because as Jeremy mentioned, if you have long straightaways, you can have a 10-foot lane, but you'll be able to get up to 40 miles an hour. So it's adding the other tools. And part of it is the activity as Crown, I mean, candidly, as Crown continues to develop out and more people walking through the commercial thing, they, the people themselves begin to act as traffic calming. It's not just an engineering tool. A lot of the problems with Crown early on were before, you know, there was the residential mass and there was as much commercial development, you know, you had a lot of people. It was more car auto-oriented than it was pedestrian-oriented in the early years of the development.
No, that's fine. I think the first part of your answer on that was, was actually exactly what I was hoping to hear is that, you know, certain things that are there probably should be changed or should perhaps in the, in a, in a future similar development would be designed differently and specific reasons why. What would you do differently about Kentland's Boulevard?
So on the screen right now, when we were looking at it, Washingtonian Boulevard, Kentland's Boulevard, these, we really viewed these as the mixed-use boulevards. We would probably keep the wide median, you know, it's the two travel lanes, it's parking what you see out there. The main difference with this one as opposed to what you see now is the separated bike facilities because there is a lot of travel. And this is something, again, that, you know, had we, you know, started from scratch, would probably incorporate that. So you'd still have the movement of the vehicles. And again, you know, the roundabouts, we discussed roundabouts in the best practices. So there's nothing to say this typology couldn't have a roundabout. That's not what the purpose of the typology is. It's to look at as the adjoining land use context and how this road can be used. Things like roundabouts, speed humps, speed tables, all of that, that's, that's the traffic calming side of this. But I think this is very much what you could anticipate seeing, six-foot sidewalk. Again, one of the things noticed is a lot of our sidewalks now, even on city roads, are four feet. This is now six feet, allows two people to walk side by side. So this, this typology here would probably best address the main section. Now, candidly, as I said, roads can change over distance. So as you look at Kentland's Boulevard, as it gets closer to Quins Orchard Road on the one end, it's a very different context. You have, you know, residential there, you no longer have the commercial, I believe, that next down to one lane. So that may be something where you change the typology over the course of the road. But for like the section that's between, you know, let's say Market Street, the main entrance to Kentland Square and Market Square, I could see something like this working.
So, and I know I'm getting way too specific for the, for this meeting, but I'm going to do it anyway. It's been suggested recently by, because of the redevelopment opportunities in Kentland's that that road perhaps should be one lane in each direction instead of two. What would you think, given that you're?
We haven't done any traffic studies. Kimco's project is coming up the 16th for sketch plan. You know, again, we have to wait till schematic development plans come and the traffic tests come into play. I can't commit to one.
I'm not, I'm not looking for a commitment. It's just that it's been suggested that the challenge with, one of the challenges with Kentland's Boulevard is crossing from one side to the other. And the design that you showed here doesn't seem like it would be any easier to cross. So would one, would one lane in each direction make sense as a, as a way to make that easier? Or is there some other?
Again, sort of the discussion is these typologies are showing mid-trump. We're not doing intersection design. So there's nothing to say that at an intersection, you know, crossing wouldn't be safe. And again, we went out, you were with us the one day when we crossed, none of us had problems crossing Kentland's Boulevard. So sometimes it's a perception versus a reality.
I think the reality of Kentland's Boulevard. The reality of Kentland's Boulevard is actually creates a barrier between, you know, basically a road barrier between two halves of the community. If we go back and look at the various plans for redevelopment of the Kentlands in this commercial area, part of the plan was to also move buildings closer to Kentland's Boulevard, along Kentland's Boulevard. That would provide the opportunity to create a mixed-use Boulevard rather than what we have now, which I think is really an impediment to safe travel from one side to the other and also an impediment to the real connectivity that we expect to have in a community like that. So, you know, I'm, I don't have any problem with what Neil's talking about here. But I think there's a lot of other elements that are included in how we would redesign that road that include the continued urbanization of this particular stretch of road between, between Market Street and, you know, all the way down to Great Seneca.
And as we pointed out, you know, here's the one, you know, to your point, that is one lane in each direction for a mixed-use Boulevard. So there's that option. There's the option with the bidirectional center turn lane, one with the median. So again, we understand.
It's all I was looking for is are there solutions that are actually going to fit in the real world of what we're facing here today? You know, just trying to check to see if this aspirational set of designs that you've given us fit some of the issues. I mean, we could probably go through a long list. I focused on some on one side of town. Victory Farm and the level of speed that we've seen there that the neighbors have complained about is another one. So hopefully, we can use some of the, some of it here, even if we don't wholesale redesign some of these roads. But we take some of this information and use it to improve some of those situations.
And I think that you can, if you take Victory Farm is a great example from the circle of Gerard all the way down to Sabre Oaks, it's pretty much a straight, straight way. I mean, if you, if you can take the G's of the bump, you know, you can pretty much pick up a pretty decent speed going through there. And by changing the design of the road, such as is, you know, anticipated in the code, if you were to redo that, you wouldn't have a straight shut. You would sort of circumshine the road, which would by design control the speed. As, you know, signage doesn't really control the speed or marking doesn't really control. It's the design that controls the speed of travel.
I think Victory Farm is a very good example. Yeah. Of one that this road code would fix. Not, not physically that road, but if we build these roads instead of those roads, we'd be better off.
Rob? Is the single-direction bike lane a minimum design standard? Or does the design, the code permit bidirectional bike lanes as well?
That's one of the ones moving forward. This is sort of the guidance we're looking for. So we can write in if you, if we go. So the typical features, actually, let me go here. So the street-type summer, even though I know this is impossible to read, but it is in your packets. We talk about minimum desired, you know, minimum preferred and required. So when we're looking for the minimum bike facility, we're usually talking, you know, single. But that doesn't mean contextually, we couldn't do a dual if it works. I mean, we want to afford flexibility. The main thing is, and as I mentioned, we will be writing in waiver provisions. What we're trying to get to is we want to be able to facilitate multimode. So if somebody comes in, as has been the past, where there's, you know, a four-foot sidewalk, five-foot green planting strip, and then 20 feet of paving, you know, in each direction, they'd have to go through a waiver provision with that. So we understand, we can't design, we can set our standards and as we flesh out the actual changes to the ordinance, we can make stuff more clear. But we can't design every feasible, you know, mix and match of every single road. So it's really setting the aspirational standards, setting what the context is and, you know, adjoining it and how these are to be used.
And it is worth mentioning that the widths that are provided for the one-way bike lanes, if instead of doing a one-way on each side, if you wanted to do a two-way on one side and you gave yourself that right-of-way width, those widths for the bike facilities pulled to the other side of the street would accommodate that.
So would it be a waiver-type situation or would it be a, it's incorporated into the regulations and it's flexibility that would?
That's one of the things we're seeking guidance on this evening. And the Transportation Committee in fact brought that up as it related to Main Street. You know, could we remove, because right now it doesn't show any separated bike facilities, could we remove one side of parallel parking as an acceptable upfront and put in a single or bidirectional bike lane? So again, if the guidance from council and Planning Commission is to clarify, you know, that it can be, you know, single direction in each side or bidirectional on one side, that, that's fine.
Depending on land use on each side of the street, right? And then I think in this code, we also have, you know, through streets. And on those through streets, we have what I call hiker bikers, the shared paths, which are larger. And I think using those, you know, as a cut-and-paste item, it's already in the code. We can use that as a cut-and-paste item. And I think it's appropriately put on the through streets. I think you're there.
I just want to make sure the flexibility is there because, for example, Quins Orchard Boulevard is proposed as a bidirectional, as I recall. The NIST path is a bidirectional shared-use path on one side.
Shared-use paths will always be bidirectional.
And so is it a minimum standard then that we have two shared-use paths? And so is it a minimum standard then that we have two shared use paths, one on each side of the road or? Because all of the, all of the cutouts here seem to have that element in it. It's either single, single direction, separated bike lanes or shared use paths on both sides of the roads. So I'm just trying to figure out what, what we're proposing to.
So this is one of the things again that we're sort of seeking guidance on. So the way this is structured, and again, I know it's impossible to read, but it is in the packet. The minimum bike facility says what the minimum bike facility is, but we intentionally didn't say one side, two sides, no sides. So that's one of the things. So if it's six and a half, that, that's a single direction. So if the guidance is we do single direction, obviously it has to be on both sides. If the direction from amending, to amend these typologies from Council and Planning Commission is to also write in, you know, that, that on one side it would have to be, you know, the twelve feet or thirteen feet for a bidirectional. And shared use paths, especially with the Park Boulevard, if that's the option, that it has to be at a minimum on one side and not both sides, you know, the, these are sort of the things we're seeking guidance on.
My guidance would be flexibility. You know, for example, if you look at the Montgomery Village Sector Plan, the county has bike lanes that are coming in towards the Lake Forest area, they're bidirectional. Our minimum standards were single direction on both sides, you come to the border and have to, you know. So that's just.
And you may be wasting money and effort putting bike path on one side if there's nothing there and there's no connections. Underestimating if you're only putting the one way on the other side. So it's all, I think it's use by side, you almost want to just put a sort of dotted center line through these diagrams and say, you know, here's half a street, make it appropriate to the land use on that side of the street. And what happens on the other side of the street should be decided by another diagram, or the same diagram, depending on what's going on.
Yeah, I'm with Matt. I, I like the idea of taking these huge boulevards that we've got with big, big streets and making them more appropriate to twenty-first century uses. But as far as what goes in between, I, I like the idea of flexibility, depending on the situation.
That, that makes total sense. I mean, the reason we started off with the, the single direction is because more or less operationally, they work better than bidirectional. Because again, you potentially have cyclists, you know, cycling into traffic even though it's a separated bike facility. So to get to another side, you know, you're sort of limiting, sort of, to Matt's point, you're, you have people just on one side now. So at least with that, you're going with the flow of traffic with, with a unidirectional. So you have less conflicts within the bicycling lane and, and you're dispersing on either side, especially as you guys, as everybody was mentioning, talking about intersection design. It's easier for a unidirectional separated bike facility to get through an intersection than a bidirectional.
Well, safer, I mean, because you don't have people coming out of your line side, you know, cyclists potentially crossing, not with traffic, but against it. And motorists coming up to that intersection, not knowing even to look that way that carefully. And that's, it's a major issue. That's why I think the intersection is a bigger question here than the, the sections through the roads and the mid-block because there's some.
And as I mentioned, our, our intention is to provide guidance with these new facilities on how to do. But, but to Michael's point, we can't design every single intersection. But we can do a lot of the standards because a lot of it's being done right now with the county through their bicycle master plan. So they're doing the same things sort of here, you know, they have guidance on best practices and, and base design features. So we plan on poaching a lot of that because they've done the work.
Yeah, there's a couple of things to add, just, I think there's some great diagrams on how to transform existing widths into some of these streets. There's some great diagrams out there already, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, in, in the Safe Streets diagrams. You know, the, just really do a great job of taking the same seventy-foot width and transforming it back into one of these pieces and it's just good in sort of illustrative pieces. We're going in and talking about, you know, different kinds of illustrative ways to explain to someone how they could design their road. I think those are some great diagrams to say, this isn't just a new thing, you can actually have the same road width and accomplish all of this. You know, especially at your smaller dimensions, right? The other one I was just worried about is, I think, you know, you took the bike trail off, took the bike path off the Main Street Street, which is the right thing to do, slower neighborhood, bikes are in the street or they're being walked down the sidewalk. And that allows for the, you know, restaurant, you know, sort of to take over some of that public space, have more than the eight feet, have a, you know, good sixteen, eighteen foot width, maybe even pull the restaurants to the, to the curb or to the, you know, door width piece for the parallel parking. It's a great diagram, it's a Bethesda kind of diagram. My only concern is if you had a restaurant on a mixed use Boulevard, how would you deal with that? It won't be, you know, an everyday occurrence, but I think we may have some, some situations where the mixed use Boulevard may want a retail piece to extend to its edge. And then you may want to have that engaged retail on, on a mixed use Boulevard. Maybe we, we say, look, it's not at that point, it's half of a Main Street or something.
Um, one thing I.
But we can have the bikes right up against whatever that, whatever that retail piece is.
And again, these are the base criterion, I think what everybody has to keep track of is we can't design for every, you know, potential thing that comes in. And we will be writing in waiver provisions, and it's not waiver provisions that are going to be on ours. I mean, we don't basically have anything right now. So if somebody comes in with a unique design and wants to do a project that takes in a lot of this, but may want less than a six foot sidewalk or, or not have the six and a half foot separated bike lane on one side of the mixed use Boulevard in order to do exactly what you're discussing. We're open to that, to, to the point of Councilmember Woo, we want to do the flexibility, but we have to establish the baseline.
So what I'm saying is, this is the one diagram that's missing. So what you have is you have a Main Street that has no bike lane on it, and you have a mixed use Boulevard that has a bike lane on it, but no, no sort of retail involvement.
I thought that was a shared roadway though, the Main Street.
So I think what you're.
Which bikes use the roadway as well as.
I think what you're.
Right.
But you're alluding to like cafe spaces and outdoor seating, that sort of thing. And we, we did talk about that during the work sessions and that ultimately, if a developer were coming in and wanted to develop a site, that either the right-of-way would need to be widened or that that cafe space would ultimately be beyond the right-of-way line and on their property.
True, yeah, typically would be, right. But I think about it later, you don't think about it tonight, but I think it's the one diagram you're missing, is having a bike lane that's protected from pedestrian area, but still on the street. So like I, I totally get the Main Street where it's, it's on the street, it's protected, low speed. But speed's a little bit higher on a mixed use Boulevard, you may still want to bring your retail as close to that street as possible. And you, and you, and if you use the Main Street diagram, you're getting rid of the bike lane. What I'm saying is, I'm sure there's a way to integrate a bike lane and be able to bring the retail closer. It's just another diagram. I don't know whether you want to bring it out, you know, around to the other side of the green area or whether you want to have a, just to protect the diagram that says you're going to protect, protect the pedestrian from the diner or really the other way around. But, yeah. But, but it just seems like a missing, a missing component.
We, we also had a clause on the mixed use Boulevard one specifically that said that separated bike lanes could be replaced by on-street facilities. Because certainly you, you have to be able to be a little bit flexible when implementing some of these specific types.
I see that now, okay.
I have one quick question. You mentioned waiver reviews, are you ready to talk about that or? I didn't think so. But I'm very, very interested in that. I mean, because we get those and, you know, we get onesie twosies, but I'd love to hear what you have to say about reviewing, you know, the last, you know, trends and waivers and that kind of thing and, and what you found. I'm really interested in that.
Neil, go ahead.
So, so I'm just wondering, I see here that we're looking at making a pretty big investment going forward in supporting bicycle and pedestrians. And looking at the reality of what we see in Gaithersburg today, we actually have a fairly small amount of bicycle usage. And certainly commuting to work is a very tiny number. And even pedestrians, we have clusters of areas where there's a high level of pedestrian use, like in our activity centers. And then in between the activity centers, you rarely see or see very small density of pedestrians and a much lesser density of bicycles. So is this plan suggesting that we need to make a, a very high level of investment in these bicycle and pedestrian facilities going forward? I mean, what I've seen regionally is, as you get closer to Washington DC, as things get more dense down into this, the lower part of the county, you have a much higher use of these kinds of modes of transportation. Out here in Gaithersburg, the numbers are much less. And I'm not sure when we get to the point where Gaithersburg is dense enough where this really becomes much more practical. So is this something that, that really makes sense today versus twenty or thirty years from now? I'm just curious what you're thinking on all this.
So I think it absolutely makes sense to address the issue today. What we find often in suburban or areas that don't currently have a lot of bicycle traffic, it has a lot more to do with the existing lack of facilities that prevent people from biking. And so when you don't have a connected network, so you might have a bike lane here and a bike lane there, but if it doesn't actually connect to anything, you, you don't really get.
Well, we clearly recognize that that's an issue. We also recognize that we have, you know, a fair number of, you know, older, less in shape people that need to get somewhere that might find bicycling around town more of a challenge. If I didn't have an e-bike, I probably wouldn't be using it either. So, you know, I, I think that there's some of that as well, and it's not, not particularly flat around here, so it's more of a challenge. So, but, you know, your point is well taken, it's certainly something that's been discussed here and at, and at the Transportation Committee that, you know, what comes first, connecting everything? I'm just concerned that we connect everything together and, you know, if we build it, do they come, right? So why do we think that that'll, that'll happen? Because I think we owe it to the taxpayers of Gaithersburg to make sure that if we make this investment, that we have some reason to believe that it's going to work. Or is there some way to, to take steps to get there rather than make this part of the giant master plan?
We just take steps down to Rockville and see how well utilized the Millennium Trail is. And it is very well utilized.
But it's a trail, it's not, this is like everything.
Well, it's mixed use pathway basically all throughout the city. I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah, I think a better analogy would be the sort of neighborhoods on the other side of, of, you know, Hungerford Drive coming to Rockville Town Center and neighborhoods west coming to Rockville Town Center. So I think, you know, my planner's perspective is, you know, if you look at a half mile TOD kind of walkable area, quarter mile for us Americans, and, and you really, you get to expand that to three quarters of a mile when you're on a bike, e-bike. So I'm, I'm not sure that the, the ultimate goal perhaps is to connect the entire city and you can drive from Bill to Jane's house or bike from Bill to Jane's house, there's no problem. But I think the immediate task is sort of connect already infrastructurally built neighborhoods. And certainly if anything new starts getting built, we want to be able, make sure that it's a, it's a, you know, built, connected within itself. So that node of neighborhood, that half mile to three quarters of miles connected.
Right, no, I, I agree with that. And I think within the activity centers, it's already reasonably safe to get around based on just the streets and sidewalks that exist.
But this will be an improvement to that.
And, and that connecting a shared use path or some sort of system so that you can get from any point in the city to any other point is also something that we've been working toward, very aspirational. But something that, you know, we now have money that hopefully will be in next year's budget to perform studies of bridging the various identified gaps so that we can get there. It's just that this seems to take it to a whole other level where you have a giant network that goes everywhere. You have not just the veins and arteries, but all the capillaries that go along with the system. And I'm just, I'm not trying to argue with anything, I just think it's important to ask the question, is, is now the time to really be moving in that direction? Or is that, you know, is that an investment for something that, you know, what I don't want to see is in twenty years, we have a whole bunch of bicycle paths all over the city that, you know, people are putting their trashcans on or something because nobody's actually using them.
But I think, I think this model here of road types or typology, whatever we're going to call it, gives us a kind of a, a template to overlay on the future development and the re, and the potential redevelopment of some areas so that we have, we have guidance is a good term, on how we would connect these neighborhoods and activity zones or centers now and, and with, with the future in mind as well so that we could adopt those. I mean, I, you know, as, as Rob began this, the purpose isn't to begin rebuilding and redesign, redesigning and rebuilding our current roads. Is to, whatever development is going to happen, whether it's redevelopment or, you know, whatever greenfields are left, these road typologies are going to apply and that will be integrating not just where cars drive and motorized vehicles drive, but where people walk and where cyclists ride within that, that context. And, but they're still going to have to connect to the existing systems that we have. So at least it gives us the guidance, I think it gives developers and planners the guidance on how we connect those existing systems to what we're going to build in the future. So I, I agree, I don't want to spend money that's not going to be put to good use, but I think we have to at least propose, provide that guidance so that it takes into account what we want the community to be in terms of its connectivity, whether it's in a, in a car, whether it's autonomously driven or driven by a real person. And the bicycles that might be, you know, riding next to it, being ridden next to the, those vehicles as well as the people walking along the street. So that's, that's the biggest concern.
Talking about future development, any provisions for infill? We've got some shopping centers that may get infilled in the next couple of years and.
Main Streets, service roads, that was the whole thought, the frontage roads. Let's envision, you know, if we have BRT on three fifty-five, there's nothing to say going long-term. You know, say those auto dealerships redevelop, wouldn't it be great to have a frontage road so you can continue to use unobstructed three fifty-five to function as a major throughway arterial and a major bus route, but for local traffic, for all those connected parcels, to have a frontage road system and a service road system, to actually serve that and get the volumes off three fifty-five. So that, again, these are all sort of the things we as staff working with Tool were thinking of as we were coming up with the typologies and that's why I wanted to state upfront. We're proposing some roads that you don't see now, and we may not see for fifteen years. But we want to be out in front of it and afford those opportunities, thinking about what's coming down the road, be it the Kentland's Commercial District, be it potentially Lake Forest Mall, be it the buildout of Watkins Mill Town Center. There, there's a number of opportunities out there to implement many of these roads.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can tell you anecdotally too, that I'm old enough that I've designed and built buildings that had, you know, two hundred feet of hiker biker that just dead-ended into grass and dead-ended into grass. It was kind of frustrating at the time to be forced to do that by planners. And then, and then I developed the building, you know, four blocks down, and it's actually connected now. And I actually have a tremendous amenity that I didn't know I was investing in twenty-five years ago. And it's really, it just, it's a little bit of its chicken and egg and a little bit, it's just a sort of longer, longer vision. And it's now, you know, King Farm, you know, and it's now a contiguous hiker biker trail, whereas before it was kind of silly, you know, everybody made fun of it. But now it's great.
All right, did you want to say something more yet, or shall we go to the public?
I had a quick question about the buffers. I don't know if you had any examples of what the buffers look like in these proposed roads.
I don't think we have any photos, and it's sort of intended to be organic. Some locations are going to be more focused on the tree canopy, others in more of a downtown area might have more benches and other amenities like that. And so with all of these, it's really just an allocation of space that will be, you know, designed to be appropriate for the adjacent land context.
All right, I want to open this up to the public, and I see Joe Allen's here. There are a few other members of the public who aren't here on payroll. So Joe, come on up.
He wasn't even going to say anything, but since you. I actually interviewed quite a bit at the Transportation Committee and we were pleased that they came forward and we provided a bunch of feedback that you see in your packet that I think is helpful. I wanted to make some personal comments based on my experience with the Washington Bicycle Association and working on the master plan in Buren County. And just best practices around road code. I think this captures a lot of what the city has done well over the last twenty or thirty years in walkable communities. You look at Kentland or Parkland or other Crown, you see a lot of good things. I think there are a number of elements in the commercial service road or in the alley or even in neighborhood streets that we might have lost some of the things that we did really well in those areas. My alley is only eighteen feet across, sixteen feet of pavement, my kids play in it. Right now we're calling for a twenty feet of pavement across with no particular context or requirement. And you see this in Parkland where you have very wide alleys, they're kind of straight shots. I don't see kids playing in them partly because the way they were designed. And so I think we're losing some of that. I would put alleys under shared roads rather than in the major context of just, it's another thing. Same for commercial service roads, you look at the parking lots in Kentland's and this applies to private roads as they've redeveloped those areas. As you want to cross to another parking lot, you want to be able to safely get there. They're not very friendly today. Today, after you use the commercial service road that's in this road code, you get exactly the same thing you get today. I don't think that's what we're really striving for. The Main Street, I think the point that was raised about the mixed use versus Main Street, I don't see a whole lot of different contexts. You don't have a lot of high-rise buildings here running our mixed use, and so they really don't serve that much different other than you might have restaurants or things like that. And I've been working in Bethesda Row, trying to redesign both Bethesda Avenue and Woodman. And I've been working in Bethesda Row trying to redesign both Bethesda Avenue and Woodmont and putting protective bike lanes outside of the tree planer area beyond so that we have pedestrians, tree planting, and then a protective bike lane and then your parallel parking. So I think some of the smaller tweaks in this could improve. I think it's a cutting-edge plan in many ways, and I said this at the meeting, but I think there are a number of outs in this plan as well that might not pull developers to the highest standard of what we really want them to do. I'd rather waiver them into plain alleys that are 20 feet wide or commercial service roads that only have one sidewalk on one side, or a Main Street that doesn't include any ability to actually get to the places from my home. And then like neighborhoods, like Lakelands, the neighborhood service, or the neighborhood roads themselves in Lakelands, they have shared use paths along most of Lakelands that provides a good deal of our network, and this doesn't require anything more than a six-foot sidewalk in most of our neighborhoods. And 80% of our roads are neighborhood roads. And so you have to remember this road code applies across the city, and the topographies that we're all invading apply probably to like 5% of the roads, and yet the alleys and neighborhood streets and the commercial service roads that apply, apply much broader.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
I'd echo this thing. The point about the alleys, because I noticed in the, in the ordinance, the draft, it also mentioned 15 miles per hour and two-way. And I think whatever geometry that stands for, that those two things alone kind of alarmed me because, you know, I don't think your speedometer's even going to register if you're going down one of these alleys in a neighborhood now. You know, if it's in a commercial area, certainly wider is better because you have to pull trash truck or, you know, dumpster trucks and not, not just conventional trash trucks. So it's just something to look at as a detail, that maybe that's really more of a one-way since it's such a low use. And as Joe mentioned, really, it gets taken back by the neighbors when it feels less like a street and more like a, an alley or a path. And the more it feels like a street, I think the less it becomes that public zone and just, we're more asphalt we don't need because there isn't that much traffic on them.
But we had a lot of discussion about this with the alleys, and again, part of the reason why we sort of sat with the 20 feet was going all the way back to the 68 road code, you know, they had 20 feet, but that, that wasn't the sole reason. Just about every development we brought in since the Lakelands and Kettlin's has been 20 feet. Parklin's was different because, you know, it had curb and gutter, did a bunch else. But Crown is 20 feet because these are all garage alley-loaded townhomes. And the difficulty was we did not want to go one way because it doesn't work realistically. And two, because of typically the utilities we run down alleys, we want the ease.
I'm going to try to agree with that. I think, I think one way, if, if it were in fact heavily traveled makes, has some relevance. But when you have one car every 15 minutes or every 20 minutes or whatever, whatever typical residential alley has, it's two-way, it's fine. You know, I mean, I don't know that there's really a, a need to keep the geometry for two-way traffic when it doesn't really get two-way traffic on a sustained basis. The other piece of that is if, if you do wide alleys that are flat and curb and gutter, they promote speed, right? I mean, you're back to that whole kind of argument about where, where speed is engineered and not, not legislated, right? So the narrower the better and the more grass the better. And if, you know, there's a little bit of skirt, a little grass on either side, that's what people do, they pull over and let somebody by if they happen to come up on somebody that they need to pass, and that seems reasonable enough. But it's, I think you just need to look at it in any language, it looks, makes it look like a road, like 15 miles an hour. I mean, that's a lot, that's a fast car on, on an alley that has kids playing on it. Just, you know, maybe look at that before, before it sort of lands in its final form. And maybe what it is, it's load and use, maybe what you end up with is some kind of a code or some kind of a, a pattern language that talks about if it really connects to businesses and needs to support a dumpster truck, it's a different kind of alley than if it's 30 houses and basically a dead end or a loop, and that's, it's entirely residential and only for those homes, you know, and not really behaving as a street.
I like my 20-foot alley.
Well, we're just thinking of some of the issues that we've had again and going to the real world, we've got that issue in Kettlin's on Kent Oaks, I think it is, where people use an alley as a cut-through between two streets. And usually at speed as if they were on a street instead of in an alley, and it's, it's not particularly safe, so.
So what does that, does that suggest wider?
Well, no, I think it suggests some, one of the traffic slowing coming methods or something.
Geometry is the problem here. Yeah.
Yeah, I think you were leading it too when you're saying with the pullovers and things like that, you can actually have 20 feet and have it stop and start so that you can't take a straight shot.
But I mean, there's also this thing, you know, a lot of alleys are, actually they belong to the HOAs, right? So then you, then you saddle them with a much more asphalt to have to replace 30 years on the road.
But, but candidly, oftentimes though, they request the wider alleys because they have some difficulties with the narrow ones, between the turning movements of getting out of their garages, everybody leaving at the same time in the morning. If we have, you know, developments that are designed on a typical grid pattern, you have two public streets on either end that, that will provide, you know, access out of the community. So when you all of a sudden start narrowing and necking down, you know, you're changing the dynamic there and you're changing the flow.
That was my point about load is maybe there's a, maybe there's a threshold where up to a certain number of units or, or parking calculations that are served by the alley, it's, it's one dimension, but if it really acts as almost a secondary road with, like you said, a fair amount of traffic, maybe it does need to be changed to something.
But these alleys at Crown are particularly long, they're less than a quarter mile, so, you know, getting speed up in less than that space is, I mean.
It's the Sherwood Johnson, which was just approved, those are 20-foot alleys, and again, everything's served.
Where an alley loaded garages.
Well, you know, I think there's a lot of other things to be, you know, with, with these new developments, there's delivery trucks, fire trucks and moving vans that have to be able to have access as well as cars being able to get around them. I think that that's, it's always been something that I've been concerned about in terms of the public streets.
Traditionally, they'll go in the alleys though, they'll only be on the public streets for, right, for moving vans.
You know, I don't know, Amazon's driving everywhere and they park everywhere, they double park everywhere, so I think they'll go wherever they can get to the closest point to the.
We're not, we can't talk about them, they're professional drivers.
They're professional drivers.
No matter what we do, they'll drive around it.
But I think, you know, what I've always been concerned about in some of these communities is, is the access for a fire truck. And we've actually seen where this has been a problem in a couple of neighborhoods where we had a fire in a townhome. And, you know, how was, what was the, the most, what's the closest area that you can get to in that fire truck? And if you have a narrow alley and there's, happens to be cars parked there, then that, that makes it difficult. So I've always been concerned about that as well, so.
I mean, you make a very good point. One of our recent, and we haven't had that many snowstorms, the police were knocking on our doors and telling us to move the cars off the street.
Off the street, right.
You know, just because, you know, we've engineered these streets to not be wide enough for, you know, the plow to get down. And we were legally parked, but, you know, we still wanted to get the street cleared. So, you know, we got to think about those things going forward.
Yeah. And the other problem is that we do have a number of residents who have a two-car garage that you can't even put one car in at this point, so that's the other part. And then they use, they use street parking.
Every resident.
It's every resident. You're right, okay, every resident. Anyway, and they end up using the street parking. And then when, when there's a snow emergency and they're supposed to get their car off the street.
Then it's an issue, right.
They clean up their garage.
Talk about aspirational.
They think that's the parking space.
Rob, do you feel appropriately guided here?
If you don't mind, I'd like to go through just the three bullets to make sure I'm clear, and especially when we do the minutes for this work session. So what I'm sort of hearing is there is support for the proposed typologies and, and sort of the methods that we're using to amend the road code.
Yes.
Yes.
And with amending the specific typologies, what I'm hearing is we need a little bit more clarification and flexibility as it relates to the bicycle facilities, probably in looking at each one, that to make clear that if it's on, if it's unidirectional, it has to be both sides and it's a minimum of this, but we would allow a bidirectional and that also potentially, if I'm correct, that we would allow shared use paths and for some, it may be acceptable to have a shared use path on one side only and not necessarily on two sides.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And traffic calming as well.
That, that for the regulations, again, that we sort of establish some of these baseline best practices for these new facilities for how they get into intersection, you know, how intersection design works at that macro level, you know, dealing with these new facilities.
I think you're right. The only thing I would add is that on-street is another option and it depends on the land use, it's immediately adjacent.
Okay.
And that the, a lot of these traffic calming type of devices and things are illustrative.